Yeah, but it's a question of...
Are we on?
Yep.
Let's try. Hello, welcome to tonight's meeting of the Town Promotion Committee. My first announcement for now is just to say that we are not yet quorret for this meeting. However, we do have more councillors who will be arriving soon. And so for now, we'll be going on air and see you in 15 minutes. Thank you. Okay, welcome and thank you for being with us today. This is the meeting of the Town Promotion Committee, Tuesday, the 3rd of October. We are a little late starting because we were waiting to be quorret. I'd just like to remind everyone, if you've got mobile phones, turn them to silent or turn them off. Okay, so, thank you. Firstly, I'll hand over to Dean for the apologies.
So we have apologies from councillor Havington, councillor Huxley, councillor Nixie, councillor Hudson, councillor Driver, councillor Alton for personal commitments, and councillor Wing for illness.
Did we have councillor Dark?
I think I had councillor Dark, yeah.
I think, yeah. Okay, are there any declarations of interest? No? Okay, item three on the agenda, to approve the minutes of the ordinary meeting of the Town Promotion Committee held on the 21st of June as a true record. Can I have a proposal for that, please? Councillor Austin and a second one? Councillor Alton? All in agree?
Agree.
Thank you. Item four, active Ramsgate meetings, to receive and note the minutes from the previous active Ramsgate meetings on the 17th of July and the 19th of September. I don't need a proposal and a second for that, do I? It's just to receive a note. Does anyone have any questions from those before I move on? Okay.
None unless there was any decisions that we need to make.
Just check. I don't think there was. Yeah, there was nothing that would mean to be carried forward as decision. All of the actions were things that were ongoing. Get the second one. The main thing was when we met about the budget, which was separate. So then the open spaces strategy meetings, there was one on the 11th of August. So to receive and note the minutes of that. Any comments or questions? Okay, received and noted. And then item six, town promotion update. We have apologies from Mrs Smith, the Town Centre Tourism Manager for tonight, but Dean is going to comment on her behalf.
Yep. So you have Rebecca's report in front of you. There's three reports there. The first one is about the relocation of the palms. The second one is about the events for the switch on and the New Year's Eve fireworks to note. And the other one is the empty premises one, which is to note. So I'll start with the palms. So obviously at the extraordinary council on the 13th of September, considered to plant up the 12 palms. Obviously, this couldn't be done due to the permissions from TDC. So we still need to consider planting to reduce the maintenance bill. Rebecca and the technicians are looking at different locations to plant. It's up in and around town. And nine palms will be relocated to Harbour Parade and nine to 10 of them will be in the town centre with nine new ones being specially maintained by youngs, as they're still young. So the request from Rebecca is that if we, for the 12 palms that need to be relocated and planted, to ask for a one-off spend of £10,700 in order to relocate and plant them up. There's a detailed list there under the recommendations. Obviously, the beautification budget is gone, it's been spent this year already and allocated. So there's two options that she's given. Either to request to FNGP to via funds from elsewhere for this financial year, 23/24, or to approve the project to come out of the 24/25 budget for next year and have work start as early as April.
Councillor Austin?
Can I ask where else we have capacity in the budget to wire from if we go for the first option?
Well, if I can start by adding my question to your question, which is going to put Dean a little bit on the spot, is how much are we likely to have within the whole town promotion budget that we might be able to wire across towards that? I know that we have some sections that are a little underspent, but I'm not quite sure how much. Is it likely to be not all of this, but a contribution towards it, I think, would be what I'd be looking at?
Yeah, I mean, I have in the budget later on, I've put what's left in the budget, which is unallocated, is £65,000. But that's not accounting for anything that's ad hoc. So there could be something that comes up in that.
There might be some from within the town promotion. I think it would probably be a good idea if we could narrow down a figure that we might be able to come up with within town promotion. I won't ask you for that figure tonight, but if you could have a look at that.
That's obviously where we could look first.
Well, exactly, yeah, thank you, yeah. I mean, if we've got unspent money in town promotion, and we may have some.
To answer councillor Austin's question, we do have a contingency budget.
And how large is that, is that? Is the plan to pass through that?
I don't remember, but I think it started out with about £25,000.
I would add to the point here is that getting this work done is essential to the town promotion budget that we've set for later on. If we do not achieve this, then the town promotion budget needs to go up by about £12,000 just to pay for the palms to be monitored, looked after, watered, and things like that. So councillor Austin?
Go ahead and do it as best possible. You find the town promotion budget and the contingency.
We, yeah, we won't have it all, yeah. We may not have it all within town promotion, but, yeah.
Where else from, because it seems to be that if we're going to do this, we need to do it as soon as possible.
Absolutely, thank you. Second one?
I'd just like, I'd just like option two.
Like option two, do you?
Just to be, not being awkward, but I'm just saying it's, you know.
Okay, so does anyone else want to second option one, since I have a proposal on it? Councillor Green?
Second option one.
Okay, can I have a vote on supporting?
Yeah, because I'd like to get it sorted.
Yeah, because I'd like to get it sorted. Do I have a vote on option one in favour? Okay, that's going to be carried then. So option one, we'll take this to full council. Well, with those against, like to raise their hands. Thank you councillor Alton. It's still carried. So Dean, you will look at in some detail at what we can squeeze out, wiggle around from the existing town promotion budget, and then look to the contingency fund or wherever else within the main budgets. Lovely, thank you. Second, what item on from Rebecca?
So the second one was an overview of the Christmas light switch on and New Year's fireworks events. This is something that isn't normally brought back, but as it hasn't been done in a few years, it's just good to know what's entailed in the work.
Dean, can I just make a very brief comment here? The town clerk emailed me earlier, and I don't know if she copied in all of the councillors, so I'll just mention this. This isn't really so much of a decision, but she felt it important that as councillors, we understood the extent of the work that Rebecca undertakes as part of this project. And so that is what this report is about. It's about us actually appreciating just what is involved and where the money's spent. Councillor Austin?
I was going to say at the end of these items that I think we should send a word of thanks to Rebecca for the huge amount of people who've been there on the empty shops. And she does so much really good work, she does events that have been brought to us in our town. But it's, it's, it's.
Do you want, councillors, do you want Dean to go through the item? Or are you happy to take this away just to read and understand later on? Because I think, you know, this is something that we can circulate again through the rest of the councillors, those who are not here tonight, I think it would be useful. And does anyone?
This will be in budget.
Yes, yes.
I can now turn it?
Yeah, so just note it, and also that we will circulate it.
Yeah.
Councillor Austin?
I just also wanted to comment on the increased events cost to TDC and on the focus of the happenstance, which is all of us in fact this evening, should be looking at that as the budget is developed. TDC is having a really negative effect on community groups, the increased events costs. And obviously, some of those are inevitable. Some of them are cost of living increases in the same way as we can see across the whole of this budget. But I do think that perhaps cabinet, dare I say, should be looking again at how much we're charging, particularly the small community groups for events.
It is a bit of a using aim thing, isn't it? A bit of balance. Obviously, as we know, TDC is looking, you know, the saving man in the budget. The budget will surely be, the initial budget will surely be coming out to all members of TDC. So I think obviously that's the time, you're making. So that once we get every, because obviously, once all members make their contribution, and obviously, as regents as well, we want to hear what they want to say. And then we can, you know, that's something, you know.
Yes, I think we'll just note.
I think, you know, as a holiday development area and all of that, our events are crucially important. And I am concerned.
Increasing costs from TDC is squeezing out the community groups, and it comes to us.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we don't know, sorry Chair, but I just think as well, we don't know what effects can the council's budget will have on our area, it'll have on the town in relation to use of.
That's the road closures, isn't it?
Oh, yes. So we don't know whether they will put the cost of those up, whatever. So I think there's probably a myriad of things that we need to take into consideration. But for now, I'm just happy to know the amount of work that Rebecca's done.
Okay. Dean, if I can just do the same, I'll, councillor Green?
I think from memory, this is the last year in contract with our people that provided lights, Christmas lights. For next year.
I think that sounds familiar. Yeah, that sounds familiar. Yes, there's something at the end here about national reports suggest a rise in firework display prices of 20%, which includes a 300% rise in shipping container costs, as most fireworks are imported from China. Local firework companies reported that another fireworks company, they know, is charging £50,000 for six-minute fireworks display on New Year's Eve. So I think that comes out of what you were just saying.
Talking about Christmas.
Oh, yeah, sorry. I was on the wrong page there, Dave, sorry.
I believe it did have one more year, it was a five-year contract, and it was done by the last councillor. I can check it out from town clerk's email.
Yeah, we'll check that, thank you. Was there anything else off of that report? The other one is the town centre occupied and empty premises report. This is a live document and it's updated on a regular basis. I think rather than go through it, shall we just, are you happy to just note that as well? Yep.
Yeah, there's nothing too much, Chair, we could, what we could do in relation to shops apart from TDC. Get it out.
Well, I mean Rebecca does do an awful lot of negotiating with the owners and everything else, as much as she can to encourage them into, back into use. I gathered the old rooks, the market has gone again, so that's empty again. I don't know if this is included on here, but so I would suggest that we note this. And we've all got this tonight, but we also circulate this to all councillors as well. I know they've had it with the reports, but circulate it again. Right, so no other questions up to date?
I was just going to say that I've heard it was going to be a fishmonger.
I think that someone put that as wishful thinking on next door, but I don't know that was. Yes, I, I think, isn't there some proposal for a fishmonger as part of a new pork development eventually?
Yeah, it is.
But that's TDC and that's whenever. Okay, so big thing for tonight is the town promotion budget for 2024/25. And I'm going to hand over to Dean to just present on this.
Okay, so over the last couple of months, the town clerk, deputy town clerk, myself, Rebecca, and the Chair of Town Promotion have been going through the budget and trying to work out what we can do and what budget headings we need for the upcoming year for projects and activities. So we've gone with a suggested 9.86% increase on the budget. And I'll go through the headings that we've kind of recommended tonight. So the first one is the active Ramsgate contractor. This was a previous budget that we no longer need as we have now Simon employed. This covered the contracts of the previous, so that will be moved under staffing. So that budget heading will move away.
So we might have expected a reduction in the budget because of that?
In the town promotion, yes, yeah.
We've done a lot of moving around.
Yep.
Trust me.
So the next one is the active Ramsgate kite surfing. So from the discussions that we've had at active Ramsgate groups, the focus for a priority event is no longer going to be kite surfing event for the area. So therefore, the separated £15,000 from the events funding that was done last year will no longer be needed. So that budget heading was going to be just stopped, and that will be reduced to nothing this year.
Dean, can I just clarify?
Yep.
The kite surfing budget, if I remember, wasn't that separate to the town promotion budget? It come under town promotion budget, did it?
It did.
It did, okay.
Yep, it was split from the events funding.
Right, okay.
Yep.
And it was split from something?
Yep. So the next one was formerly the active Ramsgate activities budget. We've just encompassed this as the active Ramsgate budget. This has, which looks like an increase. It actually encompasses the activities and the visit Ramsgate website. As most of the information for active Ramsgate is now nestled under visit Ramsgate, made sense to put it under one budget heading. So we're looking at that for a £4,400 increase, which is 10% on both of those. The next one is the beautification budget. So this current financial year, it's 27 and a half. We're recommending £19,400, that's a reduction of £8,100. This has been broken down into subheadings. So the main difference is the potted palms, which are what we discussed earlier. But these are conditional permissions, obviously, with being planted. That's why there's quite a big reduction there because of the reducing maintenance. The next one is a new budget. It's actually on the report, it's got projects, but it will be labelled town promotion projects budget. This is not currently in issues yet, but it's something that we want to bring in. That is a recommendation of £44,000, and that includes projects like the Harbour Lights, which 22, conditional planning approval, the Orbilis project, which has been mentioned at this committee before as well, £14,000, and the wayfinding and street art of £8,000. Before, it was best to have these as a separate budget with allocations. They can be used going forward as the council and committee worked for those at the last couple of meetings. Moving on to the community ad magazine, so that's had the 10% uplift. The, from what I've had conversations with community ad, they've locked into a printing contract. So the price won't change for at least two to three years. So although we've put 10% increase, that could be in distribution costs rather than the actual printing. The events budget was currently £34,000 this year as we split it from, to make council events, which is the next one on. We're recommending putting that up by £11,000, so to £45,000. As it was cut to make our adjustments for our own events last year, we're looking to put further back in to help community events in the area, put more events back on, as it has been seen and noted that council meetings struggle with allocation of events. Then it comes to ours, the council events, these are events that are run by us. That's had a 10% uplift. That includes subheadings of the Christmas light switch on, we've, the New Year's Eve fireworks, and what was once the coronation event budget is now the D-Day and unanticipated events. There's a major D-Day activity next year, and there will be funding put on that. I think Rebecca's going to look at doing a two to three day event, so.
No else? What happened to the fireworks that didn't happen? First of all, on New Year's Eve and then coronation, did we get money back for that or?
I don't know, but I can find out.
Yeah, I thought it was just delayed it.
If I remember rightly, and Dean will confirm this, we get some of the money back, but some of it, once paid, once committed, we don't get refunded because it's, things have to be bought. But there is some, we do normally get something back when we have to counsel.
We did just postpone it, or we tried to postpone it, but is that right?
That's correct, yeah. I'll get the town clerk to clarify. So, yeah, we've got in there seven and a half for the Christmas lights, three grand increase, given Rebecca's previous report about prices increase, 500 reduction in New Year's Eve fireworks, and 100 increase, which is for the D-Day one. And then you've got the events maintenance budget, currently £1,100, going up to £1,210. That's for maintenance for the equipment. So if we're looking to source new marquees or soundbags and lighting or microphone tests and things like that. Then we come on to the marketing budget, which is used promotional adverts, filming posters, which is generically for the council and can be used as well. An agreement with town clerk for active Ramsgate activities and filming our own council events. So like we've seen before with our Forces Day remembrance and civic services and things like that, that comes out, that for marketing of the town.
Sorry, councillor Green?
Can I ask, is that the extent of the marketing that we're doing? Or is there marketing within the active Ramsgate budget as well?
No, the active Ramsgate budget has moved, the active Ram, hold on a minute. The active Ramsgate budget costs have come under the active Ramsgate budget.
Yeah, so.
But it's part of that marketing.
I can speak to that, yes. Should know, active Ramsgate budget is marketing, it's promotion.
Good, I'm pleased with that.
Thank you.
So I don't know if Dean's going to come on to it, but there is a breakdown circulated, but it's not in the main calendar documents, but it should be with your documents there. Yeah. Yeah, sorry, I should have, I should have mentioned that under the active Ramsgate budget, there's a full breakdown at the back of this report that Simon's produced for the next coming year.
Because I was going to say, but without that, that's good news. I thought you'd got the balance wrong between marketing and projects.
Yeah, no.
And that was not enough to me in the marketing.
Yeah, but most of the marketing costs for active Ramsgate come under the active Ramsgate budget. This is the, not active Ramsgate.
Yeah.
This is the rest of town promotion.
So then we come on to town promotion expenses. This was previously used by Rebecca for doing any publicity and meeting expenses in and around the town. Then we have the visitor information centre budget, that has had just a 10% uplift. What we've noticed is the income for the VIC is considerably less as we've noticed that not many people are doing ticket sales and actually coming in to buy tickets anymore. Whereas it's very equal, it's now that we're.
Draw online.
Yeah, I think the last six months, we've only sold about £100 worth of tickets, whereas before in a year, we were selling about £1,200.
This was one we had some debate about because there is quite an underspent on it at the moment for this year. And so in the end, we decided to go, I was looking for an overall 10% in line with what inflation has been more or less since the last time we did this. So we stuck with the 10% on it, but it is a flexible one if you.
We've only spent a third of the.
Yeah, yeah, it's.
I think that's too high.
But that one is a, is one that I think we actually had as a little bit of a query in it. So whether or not we want to leave it unchanged or, yeah, we can look at that one.
It's something to consider because even if you looked at leaflet racking things downstairs, that only needs to be done once, it's not, it's not going to be an ongoing thing. Most of the training is provided by TDC Tourism, which is free. So that may be something that you wish to consider.
Four and five?
Five, we could drop it. Yeah.
Shall I go through the rest and then we'll come back and do different bits? Because I can go through all of the.
Yeah, we'll come, we'll come back to that one, and we'll just finish this page, and we're almost there.
So then there's the new budget that we brought in last year, which is the working with TDC Tourism to promote the area as the change, and that's 10% uplift. So that's helping with, helping TDC do reprints of cycling leaflets and tourism maps and different things for publicity linked to the VIC. Me and Rebecca have had several meetings, Juliet Woods and Paula Harbage, and there's a lot of new ideas that they're coming up with for the next coming year that we'll be bringing back to committee.
Do they need our money?
They are quite strained on the resources that they have. But we're not, I mean, there's 1,500 there that we have allocated so far for reprint, but this is over, it's not in one hit, it's over a course of several months of as and when they need. We've not done it as one lump sum, it's very much.
Do we, just sort of?
Can I let councillor Austin ask?
We've got an allocation here. I mean, it's great that we're working better with TDC, that's fantastic from lots of points of view. But I'm wondering towards extent, again, it's the same questions we have about incentives, it's badly received budget issues cascading down to us. And are they working in the same way with, you know, is Broadstairs Town Council putting money into promotional stuff for Broadstairs or whatever? Is it a standard method or is it something?
So it is something that we've opened up to, and they are looking to do it with Broadstairs. And I believe that they have started working with Westgate as well to liaise and try and get, because it was either that or cut back the cycling route maps and leaflets, which then has a knock on that.
Yeah, we don't want that to happen, but on the other hand, we are.
Subsidising, yeah.
We are subsidising again, and I mean, you know, when we did the work that Alan.
We are subsidising again and I mean, you know, when we did the work that Alan Caverly led last year at T D C on on. Better collaboration between T D C and town parish councils. It was very much about that discussion and the sharing of information and everything, we really much, we very much didn't want it to be just about. T D C squeezing its budget, so let's hand more down to town parish councils because they can increase their precept because it it shouldn't just be about that. So I'm really pleased to hear what you're saying about you and Rebecca having positive. Conversations and ideas with with Paul and the team, that's brilliant.
With some of the new trails that we're looking at, I think there's a creative trail that Rebecca's looking to do that T D C are using to publicise, so it's a.
Great.
Kind of working.
Fantastic, thank you.
Hello.
Yes, councillor Alwyn. Sorry, forgot you.
Dean, do we know? What they spend our money on, I mean, is it just a generic spend in their kind of budget? Or is there?
Is it specific condition?
Yeah.
To. Yeah, so it's only for things, we're not just handing them over, it's so if they did the. That fifteen hundred is for the Viking cycle trail reprint of leaflet, because they were running out of stock and. We wanted. We're not in our area and they were clearly for us.
Yeah, so they come back, so we don't give them that lumps, that's fine, it's all right, but so we control it.
Councillor Austin? No, it's all right, it was the same thing, yeah, that's fine, okay. Do you want to carry on Dean?
Yep, so there's really only one more, so you've got the website, which is for the the main ramscape town, the council one, which most of the work for was under me. We've had a few bits backend, bits of upgrade in the hosting, that's what would come out of that. And then that last one, as I've already said, has been nestled under the active ramscape budget as. Most of the work is done on that website now. And yeah, apologies, Simon, because the. The Simon's report of the breakdown for active ramscape at the back there as well was everything that he's. He's budgeted for for next year.
Right, we, okay, councillor Alwyn first, finish you.
No, I'll do it, I'll do it as well, we're not doing, I can't say you from that side. Yeah, I I think I just wanted to ask Dean again, in relation to our website. Are we looking to, you know, things move on pretty quick, don't they? Is that enough? Money in there to expand our website to create it more creative, et cetera, more attractive. To to people when they love it and they think, oh, it's a good site to go on.
We we've just had, so the work developer has had a new backend built, so it's much easier to for for me to deal with and. And others and that's that's cost around four to five hundred. And when we had a whole redesign before, that only cost five hundred. He's he's been pretty fair on his prices, he kept them for the last seven years the same. But I think that's that's more than enough if we needed even a complete overhaul.
Councillor Green.
Is that heading, is that code for all social media, you know, all electronic media? Does it include social media as well?
Uh, yes, yeah, yeah, that's that, that's for the the main website, any, if it's run any campaigns, I would probably say that it would come under the marketing budget.
Um, I wanted to come back to councillor Green's visitor information centre figure. Looking at what we spent on the first half of the year, I would propose five five. Would you be happy with that? Because that's basically a ten percent uplift on what we've actually spent. But still works as a reduction in the overall. So quite happy with that, I mean, we we did discuss all of these when Dean, Rebecca and I met. How many hours were we, how many hours, did we, we had three hours? We're cracking this one out to get to this stage. I, as the chair, I just want to to comment, I particularly felt that the town promotion projects. Because Rebecca has got these three separate projects that are all coming online. I wanted to see. An easy way of identifying where the money from that was coming from and that's why we looked at having these as projects set up. Who knows what another year might bring, we might save that money in future. But generally, once those projects are set up and running, then we would move them into events maintenance. And possibly if they, if there was some cost to their maintenance, we might need to increase that budget slightly, but that's. So that I think is very much a specific thing for this year and may not be ongoing for for that long, councillor Green.
Yeah, the money's going to be tight next year. Because of inflation, basically. I mean, given that you're losing. Twenty two K, twenty two thousand. Then move to staffing. You're asking for an increase of about forty forty K. Now you might not get that, so you need to think about.
Yeah.
Where you would.
Well, I mean, we've got two. We've got two areas where we have put in more than we might have. One of them is the one I've just mentioned, the town promotion projects, but that's partly because council have agreed those projects to be going forward. And so obviously we need to, so so the the layout here is to clarify rather than than anything else.
Won't be because we want to get it.
Appreciate that. The other, the other one was, I wanted to comment on was the events funding. I did, I have already knocked this one down because what I was given as a proposal was sixty thousand. And that's one of the things that we had a long conversation about. The reality is that thirty four thousand hasn't been enough last year and. I know that we split that budget up into council events and community events, but the reality was that the thirty four K was just not going anywhere near it. No, so. Decisions to make. We have, yeah. And so so we did have a a nice long battle here between us and we we ended up with forty five. As a proposal for this year. Because as I think, I mean councillor Austin has said, you know, our our community groups do depend on us. To run so many of our community activities and our community events that that people. Get people into the town and and get the communities engaged. So I I just, I just wanted to comment on that, I don't know if anyone wants to add on it, beautification budget, obviously, we tried to take something off of that. But that that depends on full council finding the money to sort these palms out that have got more and more expensive. Become untenable, so. Were there any other comments?
The decision will be for council decision.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean, obviously this will, so.
I think, I think as chair is consequently said, I think we've got some difficult choices to make. You know, and. We as a council must prioritise what we think is the right thing for our for our residents and and it may be that some of the. Other less prominent things will go, but I'm quite happy to.
So.
We need to look at that.
So is broadly everyone happy with what what we've got, reducing the V I C down to five five instead of seven seven? So any other comments or questions? In that case, I think I need a proposal for this to go forward to the next stage. Does it go to F and G P next?
Finance.
Yeah, goes to F and G P next and then it goes to full council, so.
I'll come to that.
Was, I mean, we've got.
Let's get to F and G P.
Right, you've got that.
Yep.
All in favour? Right, carried. Thank you for being here, sir, oh, thank you for being here, you did actually get an opportunity, things did go through, but I just. Would you like, is there anything you'd like to say about the active ramscape?
I was just, I was just going to ask, Simon is here.
Yeah.
If you could just give us a good quick update.
Thank you, thank you for saying what I was already saying.
Yeah, well.
I, it would, it would be, it would be good to actually, yes, please.
Sure, absolutely. Basically, since I've come into the role, a lot of time has been spent with sort of. A strategic review of what active ramscape looks like at the moment, you know, it's been going for ten years. It's grown at that time, very successfully, as as we know from some of the listeners who. Actually stating the activities, the, 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 interamente. But in saying I've grown quite large, although it was quite mixed, so we spent some time looking at really which. Activities after investment to try and streamline somewhat and maybe sort of move out of that are. Favored or have less interest for various different reasons, so kite surfing was mentioned, but for example, geocaching. Has just fallen out of vogue.
Well, sorry.
Geocaching, which is.
You missed coming in.
One of the smaller ones admittedly that's listed on the active ramscape website, but is. Has fallen out of favour more generally and is practically less helpful to us. So a lot of it's been about relooking at that and prioritising and refocusing and actually as part of that. And for councillor Green, who'll who'll know from from the working group meeting. Councillor Chris is the chair in that one, knows that we're prioritising some market research. To one, really find out which of the activities we have in our very long list. Are speaking most and have the greatest pull factor to our target audiences. And we are trying to be more targeted, as part of my role coming in, I was given. A set of audience profiles to try and hit which fits along in line with. T D C's visitor, audience segmentation and visit candidates as well, so we're trying to. Match up there and be strategic and in alignment. That will primarily try and work out which activities are most attractive to them, but also how best to reach those audiences, so once we know, we can. Target them most effectively and also how to benchmark the success of these activities ongoing. This is a big sort of black hole at the moment, there's not much. Data in terms of how is each activity doing, you know, is it actually bringing people in, are people receptive to it? Do they enjoy it or they come back again for it, that sort of thing. I'm particularly flagging that as well because we're earmarking five to eight thousand pounds within this year's budget. Because I've come into the role halfway through the year almost. We still have an unallocated budget to use, so it seems a good time to use that and get. Get it done, so it can inform the work ahead. So you will be getting a brief and report for your approval, we're going out to get four quotes on it. As we speak, but that will, that will come to us in the next council meeting or extraordinary meeting if we, if it's deemed necessary. Think that's about it for now, just to come on to your point, councillor Green about marketing within that. Again, the market research is is sort of spending towards moving towards marketing, it's not marketing itself. But I'm also allocating, what you don't have is, I do have a breakdown for the current year, most of that is promotional. Again, I'm trying to use a lot of that now to get us set up for next year. But the but the twenty four, twenty five budget as well is is the balance of that is largely advertising, promotion. Events, we're bringing back active ramscape week and also. The only bigger area that I'm bringing in, which is perhaps newer, is what I'm. What I'm calling business support and activities development. Which we can use more flexibility to trial and support businesses to. Move forward to provide an activity or extend an activity in a way that they might not. Because they haven't got the fund or they haven't got the support. For, I can give you a perfect example of this right now, we're talking to. A bike tour company. Who have been very successful across that, they already. Do reach into ramscape, but not particularly far, so we're in discussion with them about. Could we trial more from ramscape around and in ramscape and starting from ramscape? So that's, that's an example of how we would use some of that money going forward. I could, one last thing to, sorry, just, sorry, to understand some of this thinking, if you've not, for those who haven't been to the working group meetings. I did provide a sort of setting out the stall presentation, which has been to. The the councillors who came to the working group, but I'm more than happy to share with anyone who's interested.
I think that might have been circulated.
With the minister went around, yeah, okay, if it's, I'm sure that probably got lost in a lot of email, but.
I'm sure it did.
To anyone else.
I'm sure it did.
There is a presentation that. All this together.
Councillor Austin, I was just going to ask about balancing up that the business support business, for doing your example, for example, about the bike tour company, how you balance that with supporting, say, local. You know, Harbour Bikes or whoever, you know, people who are here already doing.
Well, they cross over.
How do those, how how do you balance up, that's it's a more general question rather than the specifics of that, but.
So it's a really good question, that business support pocket, I mean, that example. Is a provider who's across that, but will actually directly support into businesses within ramscape.
Right.
Harbour Bikes being one of them.
Yes.
Highly likely, because he will be reliant on. People hiring bikes.
Yes.
So we will be looking to find that direct link.
To link those.
Exactly.
Yes, so you're not, so by doing the broader thing, you're not disadvantaging the small thing.
But it's also open to. To, you know, for example, should Harbour Bikes come to me, maybe another example is. I noticed that in boat trips, it's all cash based. This, you know, I need to talk to them more about this, but my, and my, as as other assumptions is, they don't have. Cash point of sales because they just haven't invested in it, because that's a lump sum upfront. We could potentially use budget to help them overcome that financial barrier. Because that seems like a no brainer for them to secure more business, et cetera, so.
The issue man can have a cash point then. Councillor, sorry, councillor Alwyn got in there first.
I just wanted to ask Simon, you just mentioned base of the water face and that's what I was going to ask, I mean, we. Expanding on our water face, we've lost the kite surfing. And so obviously it's. The biggest asset that we have is is the sea and so that's, it's area like that expanding, I don't know. I'm not saying that myself, but you know, if there's a chance of getting where people can hire anything. Boats or paddleboard gear. That might be, which is very.
The sea, the sea, the sea as a, as a theme and a strand is something I'm quite keen to bring forwards. With this rationalisation and refocus, I'm kind of looking at it in four main strands, walking, cycling, seagoing and exploring. Which is the latter one a bit more vague, but would include things like coast coastal exploring. Groups with Danic Coast Project, for example, or using the Coastal Explorers packs that you can hire, that sort of thing, more family focused, but on the seagoing element. I entirely hear that and I think the whole of active ramscape really ought to be about. Exploiting to the best our situation and geography, so the walking and the cycling. Definitely already does that across the town and along the coast, but the sea particularly, I think it's been slightly, I think. Previously, kite surfing was a lot of eggs into the one basket of that. And I think it hasn't seen a return on investment, that's not to say we don't want to support other things, so. The kite surfing providers also are already supported by us through a standard paddleboarding, for example.
Graham does.
And wingsurfing is also a growing area and it's also, there are more providers doing that now. I think as well, when kite surfing came in, there was really only one provider, there are more providers, so we're keen to look at these other options. That are also more accessible, problem with kite surfing is it's very expensive. more accessible. Problem with kite surfing is it's very expensive and quite a long time to get into it.
Yeah.
You have to spend a few hours just on the beach with the kite before you get- But equally, I'm looking at activities and promotions that support, for example, open water swimming. There's not really, that's not really been under the active Ramsgate portfolio to date, other than through the highathlon. But there are now teachers out there who do it along our bays.
And there's lots of locals involved.
And it's a very, it's, it's an increase, it reaches out to locals and visitors. I've been talking to one open water swimming teacher who says, people call her up from London, come down. So I think it's, and it's a growing area.
It'll be growing.
Just, Dean's just given me a comment, going back to where councillor Green was talking about early on, about some of the money that was moved out no longer. The 15k for kite surfing was used for the coronation budget?
Yeah, it was fired over.
It was fired over.
That's what became that, yeah.
And largely was the 15 earmarked for the, for the championship?
Yeah, originally, yeah.
Councillor Green, you wanted to-
I was going to ask, we've still got the link to K C C, what's there? K C C's, what was it called?
Yeah.
So there is no formal link still with active Ramsgate. That was, it was, when, when it started, they were, I believe there was funding coming through with Explore Kent. So they were very much part of it. That was terminated, I think, three or four years ago now. However, that said, once we've sort of had our own refocus and rationalisation of things, I'm, I'm very keen to rebuild that relationship to help on the promotional side. We're very much talking to Visit Thanet and colleagues at T D C. But- But there's no run at trees or anything? Um, no, that's the question.
I just wanted to add one thing, as this is going to F and G P next. We didn't really look at the continuation pages that come with this. But under the, the town promotion projects budget, there are two of the more expensive sections that are subject to planning approval and could actually fall by the wayside. But we will know that. How long, how long, I'm ashamed Rebecca's not here because she probably know where it's at. But those are things that we actually don't know about yet. So we still need to leave in the allowance for that. But I, I get the impression that the Harbour Lights one has some vulnerabilities to it. But I think the Obilis project, I don't know where that's at. But the Harbour Lights one, I, I know has had some vulnerabilities. So that may affect that budget. But we, at the moment, because these have been agreed and they are projects, so we do need to allow for them to be in the budget. So I just wanted to add that in. As I know your budget is your- It's, yeah, yeah, it's, it wants to show you what you can or what you can't. Okay. Anything else from anyone else?
In that case, I think it is item eight.
Date and time of-
Next meeting is Wednesday, 24th January.
Good luck. So happy Christmas, good New Year.